Regular meeting of the City Council will now come to order, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Semenelli.
Ah.
And Counselor Tapiero.
Here.
President Tapiero. You have eleven, uh, members present.
Audience, please join us in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, we, the city of Everett has lost, uh, a few people over the past few days. One was the Honorable Judge Lee Johnson of the Malden District Court. And also today, uh, James Jimmy Cataldo of Dean Street, uh, passed away today. He's the father of local attorney Joseph Cataldo, so please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Counselor Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion that we, uh, appoint Sergio Canelio, our Assistant City Clerk, to be our clerk of the meeting this evening?
Motion made and seconded to appoint Mr. Canelio as the clerk of the council for the evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please read the first item, Mr. Clerk.
First order is a public hearing to all parties interested in, in the public hearing for the National Grid to install PVC conduit from, from an existing pole, number twenty, to private property, the River Green Business Park on the Air Force Road.
Is the petitioner present? Please introduce yourself to the council. And councils, if you're not using your microphones, please shut them off, there's some feedback. Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Cameron with National Grid, offices at 170 Medford Street in Malden.
John Jankowski, 170 Medford Street in Malden, Mass.
Thank you, gentlemen, can you just explain the petition to the council, please?
Sure, this is, um, we need to install, well, first of all, the, is it on? Okay. With the new River Green Business Park down off of Air Force Road, uh, that is now being, as most of you probably are aware, that is being, that is under construction. And so, um, we need to provide power to that entire development. So we need to, uh, install some conduit between an existing, uh, pole and that'll feed underground into the development. Uh, part of it is on the public way of Air Force Road, so it does require a grant allocation petition. So that's why we're here this evening.
Are there any questions, councilors? Counselor Sani?
Um, what are the hours of operation that you'll be doing the work down that area?
Be during the day.
You say nothing at nighttime?
No.
Thank you.
Counselor Delasola?
Just a quick question, uh, the soil that's down there, wherever they dig out, is that being removed and hauled somewhere in case it is contaminated?
Yes, it'll, we'll have our environmental people also working with, um, you know, the developers as well.
Alright, thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guest, how long of a job do you think this is, duration?
Yeah, probably a couple of days.
Couple of days? Okay. Have you got other questions, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just would like to thank Mr. Cameron, uh, for the work on the Revere Beach Parkway. Uh, you fixed over seventy-two lights there and you put some poles that had been gone, Mr. President, for, I'd say, six or seven years. And, uh, that's a big improvement and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion made and seconded to excuse the guest with a customary thanks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion open the public hearing.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. I'm going to ask three times if anyone in the audience is in favor of this and I'm going to do the same if anyone is opposed. Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor? Anyone in favor? That portion of the public hearing is concluded. I'm going to ask three times if anyone is opposed. Is anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? Is anybody opposed? Is anybody opposed? That portion is over. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Favorable action on the order?
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon. Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani? Counselor Semenelli?
Ah.
And President Tapiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, the order has passed.
Okay, please read the second item.
Item number two, Mr. President, is to all interested parties in the public hearing for, to grant Light Tower Fiber Optics LLC to install conduit in a westernly direction in the public way to propose light tower, three foot by three foot handhold in the sidewalk in front of 350 Broadway.
Please introduce yourself and if you just wouldn't mind using another microphone, that one doesn't work too well, thank you.
Okay. Bob Walls, Light Tower Fiber Networks, 80 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass. We're proposing to place, uh, forty-nine feet of four-inch conduit across Broadway from Engrid Manhole 317 to a handhole I'm going to place into the sidewalk. The trench is eighteen inches wide, we go down twenty-four inches. Um, I am aware that this is a busy street, so if you'd like me to do this on the weekend or at night, that's no problem.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Can you just explain what the, the purpose of this work is for?
Um, it's for a new fiber line to Eagle Bank.
Okay, I'll yield the floor first.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you said this was going to go across Broadway?
Correct.
Is it going to be like, uh, are you going to do it half at a time, with the traffic?
Yeah, we can do that, um, so like, the traffic management, we plans will close one side, do that side, and then switch over and close the other side and traffic.
How long of a, of a, of a job would this be?
We can do it in one day.
In one day?
Yep. And like I said, we can do it at night or on the weekend, that's no problem.
Do it at night and get the whole thing done in one shot?
It's no problem by me.
Alright, okay.
Counselor DeFlorio?
I was going to ask the same thing for him to do it at night because during the day, especially with the bus lane and everything going on, I, I believe that would be a problem, so, thank you.
Counselor Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guest, could you explain what a three-foot by three-foot handhold in the sidewalk is?
Uh, so it's just like a miniature manhole, pretty much, so.
So its surface level, is nothing above grade?
Correct.
Okay, so all the work is underground?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I have any questions?
A second.
Motion made and seconded to excuse the guest with a customary thanks, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Favorable action on the order?
Nope.
Public hearing?
Public hearing first.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, just like the last one, I'm going to ask three times, both someone in favor and opposed, so is anyone in favor of the petition? Anybody in favor of the petition? Anybody in favor of the petition? I'm going to do the same if anyone's opposed, is anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? Is anybody opposed? Is anybody opposed? That portion is now concluded.
Favorable action on the order with the restriction?
We have to close the public hearing first.
Make a motion to close public hearings.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the item is now before you.
Favorable action on the order, uh, understanding that, uh, it's cannot be done during business hours, that it should be done anytime after, um, I believe eight o'clock, eight, nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, that's good.
So I, I would say anytime after eight o'clock if my colleagues agree.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action with the condition that work start after 8:00 P.M. All those in favor, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola? Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Ah.
President Tapiero?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
The petition has been granted. Motion made and seconded to open public participation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council, do you have a sign and sheet, Counselor?
I, I told Mr. President, I have, uh, one person, Joseph, I believe it's LaPlante, uh, from 33 Lexington Street.
Mr. LaPlante, please come forward. If you'd just introduce yourself for the record.
Would you mind this one here? I want to turn around and find out why, we seem to have a lot of homeless elderly people and a lot of immigrants that are coming here, okay, are getting housed before they are. I should know because I just brought my sister up from, uh, Georgia, okay, she's temporarily staying with me and I need some help trying to get her into emergency housing. And I wind up talking to a lot of people on the streets that are elderly and they're living over here in the pocket stuff and it's kind of ridiculous. Our own people that live in Everett here are homeless, why is that? And why does it take so long to get up into some kind of housing?
Thank you for the question, the council rules just allow you to speak your mind, we're not allowed to debate back and forth, but if you, on the way out, if you please leave your contact information with Ms. McCory in the council office?
Sure.
Uh, one of us will gladly get back to you. Yeah, if there's anything else that you want to add to it, please do.
Well, I really need some help now, I mean, I can, elderly sister is going to mention in the afternoon, okay, she was living down in Georgia and the state walked in and pulled her over where she was living. It was un- unemployable, there was mold and everything, seal and fallout and everything else. I drove down nineteen and a half hours to go pick her up, bring her back here, she's been there, living up here the last three weeks. I could only put her up so much in my house before my landlord jacks up my rent more and I gave up my own bedroom just so she has, so she have a bed to sleep and I sleep on my couch now. But, um, what we need to do is try to get the elderly people off the street, get them into housing, some kind of housing. Instead of like, you have a lot of immigrants that come in here, out of the country here, and they seem to be getting housed quicker than our own citizens of Everett. And that shouldn't be right at all. But I'll leave my information, I thank the council very much.
Thank you. Counselor McKinnon?
Actually, I just wanted to ask the President a, a question. Uh, Mr. President, if we could, just have the, uh, the park that he stated again so that we can actually, you know, send someone down there to take a look at it. If we could provide that to Caroline, that would be great.
Provide all that information to Ms. McCory, thank you very much.
She's in the back, so.
Thank you.
Close public participation?
Motion made and seconded to close public participation, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
A long sign and sheet, so. Okay, so that's, yeah, I was going to say that.
Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Let's take them all collectively, how many are there? Three. Three, four, five. So, items three, four, and five collectively?
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to take items three, four, and five collectively, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number three, Mr. President, is appointing ten listed special police officers to the Everett Auxiliary Police Department for an unpaid term of one year ending July 18. Item number four, Mr. President, is subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council to appoint Corey Young as patrolman in the City of Everett's Police Department. And item number five, Mr. President, is a subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council to appoint Stacia Giorgioni as special officer for the purpose of performing her duties as the animal control officer for a three-year term expiring 2020.
Mr. Chairman?
Favorable action?
Move favorable action, item number three, have the members come forward to be sworn in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action, item number three, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Ah.
And President Tapiero?
Yes.
You have eleven yeas, zero nays, the order has passed, Mr. President.
Order has passed, if you will please come forward and get sworn in, gentlemen.
So twelve and thirteen appointments.
You raise your right hand?
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to.
Hi.
Hi.
Dues solemnly swear. Dues faithfully and impartially. Dues discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a Everett Auxiliary Police Officer.
As a Everett Auxiliary Police Officer.
Appointing the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulate. Far. 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 I, I. Dues solemnly swear. Dues faithfully and impartially. Dues discharge and perform.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God, so help me God, congratulations. The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God, so help me God, congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen, if you want to come this way, I'll do, shake hands.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we could, uh, just to, um, uh, through the, the chief of the auxiliary, have those members that were not here report to the city clerk's office, uh, this week sometime to be sworn in, okay?
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Is there a motion?
Item four.
I did. Item four?
Okay.
Favorable action on item number four?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on item number four, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Item number four, Fred Capone, uh, Counselor Capone, sorry?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yeah, yep.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Ah.
And President Tapiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, the order has passed.
Is she in the audience? Oh, wrong one, I'm sorry, yep, please come forward, I thought it was for the number five, I apologize.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Dues solemnly swear. Thou faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As a patrolman for the City of Everett Police Department. According to the best of my abilities. And understanding. Agreeably to the rules. Regulations. Laws.
Laws.
Ordances and charter. Of the City of Everett. So help me God. Aye.
Aye, Corey Young.
Dues solemnly swear.
Dues solemnly swear.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
Thou bear true, true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And will support the Constitution. And laws of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Aye.
Aye, Corey Young.
Dues solemnly swear. Thou bear true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. And thou support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations, officer.
Mr. Chairman, if we could take a five-minute break, is the office's chairman here? Favorable action on item number five?
Second. This meeting will reconvene, what was that motion again, Counselor?
Favorable action on item number five.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on item number five, please call the roll again, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Oh, that's right.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Ah.
And President Tapiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Mr. Chairman, we have two more items of people that need to be appointed, so we might as well, uh, if we could, please take items twelve and thirteen off the agenda.
She's not present, can you please inform?
In the next two, I'm going to be present, they've already been called.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded to take those two items collaboratively, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen, yes, okay. Number twelve is in order to appoint John Giuliano to the Historical Commission for a term of three years ending March of 2020. And I, oh, did you want me to re-vote, sorry? I'm sorry, go ahead. Item number thirteen is in order to appoint, uh, Paul Bertone to the Historical Commission for a term of three years expiring March 2020.
Favorable action on item number twelve?
Would you like to vote for Counselor?
We might as well vote collectively, twelve and thirteen.
You can vote on them collectively if you like, there's a roll call. It's up to you, who cares?
Okay. I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on both items, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
On both items twelve and thirteen, Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon? Counselor Matusky? Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
You have eleven yays, zero nays on both orders.
Both orders have passed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some sign, and if we could please take items number eighteen, the petition is about here, and favorable action on the order.
Motion made in second to suspend the rules and take item eighteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ayes, have it.
Accept the committee report. We've got to read it first.
You've got to read it first, counsel.
(laughing).
Let me just grab the order.
Item number eighteen is a petition from owner of CaballosiCaballosiso.com by Marlene's at 128 Buckham Street to erect a permanent awning.
Accept the committee place on file and favorable action on the order.
Motion made in second to accept the committee report, place on file, and take favorable action, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
On item number eighteen, Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
That is eleven yays, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Order has passed.
You said they're in there. Just, I just remind them that they can pick up their petition after twelve on Wednesday in my office, in the clerk's office, okay? Thank you.
Please suspend the rule and have, I have item number nineteen.
Motion made in second to suspend the rules and take item nineteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ayes, have it.
Item number nineteen is a resolution offered by Counselor John F. Hanlon that the Committee on Community Business and Development hold a hearing to include ISD, licensee, and property owner to determine whether sufficient facts exist to revoke the repair shop license at 36 Mystic Street due to unpaid fines and unpermitted alterations to the premises resulting in a cease and desist order from the building department.
Report placed on file, and we have a recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Motion made in second to accept the report, place on file, and refer back to sponsor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, counsel?
On the motion, referring it back to the sponsor would be myself, and that in fact would end this matter until they do some other kind of processing. However, you know, we've heard some things that are going on this evening, and the thing that I am really concerned about is the fact that the landlord of this establishment had not signed the particular document. Our city solicitor had indicated that it may be okay. I don't agree with the city solicitor because for years we have been doing it that way, that has been our practice on this board. The message we're sending out is that no other landlord will ever be required to sign these documents because now it no longer matters, but it does matter, and we should stick with what we have. And the thing is that that document was not filled out properly, the license is not issued properly, and so the fact to return it back to me has done exactly nothing, and what we, what I think we should do is to declare the license void, let them take care of it in their manner, I don't want to hear about the court, nothing about that, that's their problem, but I think that the license that we gave out is voided because it was issued not properly.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, we are here to protect the taxpayers, and the city solicitor gave us a ruling, and that's what I'm going by. So basically, the license was a renewal, and it really doesn't require the landlord's signature, because it was a renewal, this is not a new license, okay? There's way too much going on with this, we are here to protect the taxpayers, because if they come back after us, it's the taxpayer that's going to pay for us to go to court, it's not out of our pocket. So to me, this is something that we should not get involved in, we spend an hour on the committee going back and forth, we had both parties speaking, we had the building inspector up there, we got a ruling from the city solicitor, and I believe that we need to go by what the city solicitor is saying, so thank you.
Counselor Capone?
I'll be extremely brief, I think the chairwoman handled it properly. The issue wasn't the license itself, because it was a renewal, the issue was, it was an unauthorized building of a ten-by-twelve office space, but from what we heard, it is not entirely clear whether or not the owner was aware of it while it was going through, given that it is in litigation, the best thing we can do is just let the parties present that to the judge, and they can go from there, so I back the motion to refer back to sponsor.
Counselor McKinnon?
I'd like to have the city solicitor before us.
Is there a second? Motion made in second to invite the city solicitor before us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ayes, have it.
Carlene Mejia, city solicitor.
Through you, Mr. President, to the city solicitor. Ms. Mejia, we've, we, most of us were not in that committee meeting, just could you bring us up to speed on what happened at that committee meeting, and your ruling on this as a city solicitor?
What?
Your professional opinion too, as well?
What I explained was that the city clerk brought forth additional information about the application in terms of the cease and desist and the outstanding fines, and it's completely within your authority to determine whether you want to use that additional information to have a hearing to either suspend or revoke the license. It's completely within your authority as a city council, you don't have to act on it or you can't. So that's basically...
As far as the documents and stuff like that being signed, is that common or not common, or is that a practice?
The city clerk had explained previously to me that it was his practice in a renewal, as long as the tenant had a valid lease, he did not require the property owner's signature.
Thank you very much, I have no further questions.
Counselor McGlaughlin is the next speaker, but do you have questions for the city solicitor?
I have questions for the building inspector or code enforcement that may lead into questions for the city solicitor.
Motion made in second.
Excuse me, I'll yield the floor to my colleague.
Go ahead, Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Mejia, I noticed there's two parties in the chamber tonight, one is the tenant, I believe, and one is the landlord. And this is in court, am I right?
As far as I know, it is, that's what they say.
So they have disagreement one another. When was this license issued, do you, do you know?
I don't know, I wasn't, I'm not involved in the licenses.
How many years ago?
Our assistant clerk.
We voted on it April 30th? So that wasn't too long ago, I mean, he's a new tenant, right, is that it?
It was a renewal of a license, counsel.
Oh, is it, we, when was the original license issued, that's what I want to know? I wasn't on the council then, okay, I don't even know what kind of business it is, but this is in court, I mean legitimately in court, there's, you know, a judge and jury, there's two lawyers here being paid tonight to be here in this chamber, and I can't see myself voting either way on this. I want the court to decide, and that's the fair way to do it for both parties involved, you know, whether we hear from the building inspector or not, this is just going on and on. I'm not a member of the licensing committee, so I'm not as aware of the issue here, I know the neighborhood very well, but I agree with the counsel of Roser, rather, and I agree with your opinion, you are the city's attorney, and you think it should be dealt with in court, is that it?
Whatever issue they're fighting in court has nothing to do with the city, we don't get involved in the private disputes. There was a question about the additional information on the license in terms of a cease and desist order and outstanding fines, I believe the fines were paid, and the building inspector spoke about the cease and desist order in the committee meeting.
I see. Okay, well, I want to thank you for preparing, you know, my mind is made up what I think I should do, so that's that, thank you.
Motion made in second to excuse our city solicitor, all those in favor? Oppose the ayes, have it. Counselor McGlaughlin is the next speaker.
I would agree with Counselor Matuski, but to say that I'm not sure, the background of this item, I wasn't in committee, and I wasn't able to watch the previous meetings on this issue, so to be able to make an informed decision is pretty difficult, that's why I wanted to hear from our building inspector, so that maybe he can put some light on this for the members that haven't been in committee or haven't heard from both sides of the story, because at this moment, I'm not sure of the right action to take on this item.
That's right.
If there's two separate pieces, something that's in court, it has nothing to do with our jurisdiction, no matter what we do, and an item that does have something to do with our jurisdiction one way or another, we should be dealing with our side of the issue and allow the courts to deal with their side of the issue. If I'm wrong, please correct me, I have no problem being wrong.
I'm going to allow Counselor DeFlorio, as the chairman of that committee, to explain what happened, so we don't rehash the entire committee meeting here, thank you.
What had happened is that there was a part of this building, that a ten-by-twelve room, that was added on, and it was not on the original plan. The tenant, they issued a cease and desist order, the tenant came up and got the permit for the electricity and for the plumbing, now the owner has to sign off on it, and he won't sign off on it. So that was basically what was said by the building inspector, okay? That's the only reason why the cease and desist order went out, not because there's anything else wrong, it's not, it's because the owner will not sign off on it.
That is correct.
So this is all about a signature on a permit, on a building permit, the other issues have all been resolved, fines have been resolved, gas and electric permits have been pulled and been dealt with properly, and this is all comes down to a signature on a building permit.
Mr. Soper informed me that the tenant has done what he's been able to do.
So if the building owner isn't willing to sign off on the building permit, then are we willing to send this back to sponsor, I'm not sure that that's the right motion to take. If it comes down to a simple signature on a building permit, unless there's something we're missing or something we don't know.
Mr. Chairman, the cease and desist order is on the license, it's not on the owner or the property. Is that correct? It's on the property? But they're having a big dispute in regards to this property, so that's why I really don't think we should go any further with this and let the courts decide.
Are you all set, counselor? Counselor Delasola is next.
I said two questions, who did the, through the chair, who did the work on the, who added the ten-by-ten room?
Nobody knows who did it, it was basically on the plan, the plan didn't show this extension of the ten-by-twelve room. The original plan was, I believe, in 1985, Mr. Soper's in the audience, if you would like to, if you would like to speak to him, okay?
I know there's a lot involved, I just wonder why, if it's there, why the, if he added a building, a part of it, if he added a room onto the building that the homeowner, the property owner owns, and if he signs off on it, there's something, there's a missing link here.
Because there's a dispute between the tenants, he wants a tenant out, so that's why...
Can the building inspector?
Yes.
Motion made in second to invite Mr. Soper before us, all in favor? Oppose the ayes, have it.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, Jim Soper, building commissioner, City of Everett.
Mr. Soper, I'm just curious, if, who added, who added the addition onto this building?
To make it clear, it was not an addition, this was an interior office within the interior walls of the existing building, ten-by-twelve interior office.
Without getting it off, you can even answer this question with the courts, why won't he sign off, why won't he sign, it's his building, whatever was done to that room is a benefit of the owner of the building.
I would agree, and there is the cease and desist issued on the owner, the owner will not sign a building permit application as required under the mass general law.
And the work has already been done?
Done. Yes.
Like I said, there's a missing link here somewhere, I'm not a judge, I'm not a lawyer, so I'll, that's all the questions I have right now.
Just because Mr. Soper is here, I know Counselor McGlaughlin had a question for him, go ahead.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Soper, at any time, did you see any evidence of this room being built, is there any proof of when this room was built, a timeframe of when it was built, I mean, right, it seems as a pretty simple issue, that if somebody built a room, whether they had permission or not, you go and pull the building permit, and you get a slap on the wrist under, and you move forward. Is there any proof of when this was done, under whose watch it was done under?
I have a permit for the building, entire building to be constructed in 1983, I researched the plans after entering the building and seeing what was constructed.
Okay.
On or about November 21st, after reviewing those plans, I saw a ten-by-twelve room on the left-hand corner that was constructed after the initial permit, I have no idea who constructed it, I was provided photograph evidence of construction happening inside of that building where it appears to be where that office is now located, but I don't have a date on those.
Who submitted those photos to you?
The owner of the property.
So he could maybe say when the photos were taken? Have you asked at times, and again, I'm really, I have to make a vote tonight, right, but we have to make a decision tonight, one way or another. I'm trying to get all the facts so that I can make the best sound decision for the city. But there's something missing here, there's a missing link somewhere along this line of communication, so where do we go in your opinion, Mr. Soper?
I don't know if I want to offer an opinion where we go, I can just state the facts, eighty-three, there was a permit, there was no interior office in that location, there is an interior office on November 21st, 2016, we wrote a cease and desist order which included request for permits for building electrical and plumbing, electrical and plumbing have been, we've received the permits, the inspections have been done, those permits not require the owner of the property's signature, however, the building permit does, and that's the impediment at this point for me to close out this cease and desist order.
So this cease and desist order is only based on the fact that we can't get a signature, you can't get a signature on the building permit? If the signature was rendered tonight, the cease and desist order goes away?
And then there'd be a inspection?
Sure.
And it would be cleared, it would be...
I'm sure the inspection would go just fine, I mean, construction's done every day. So there is a missing link of why the signature won't appear on a building permit, okay, for that reason, I'm clear, thank you.
Is your question for Mr. Soper? Is it for Mr. Soper? Counselor Napolitano has been waiting.
Thank you. So for the work that's there, I understand the situation, is the work that's been done, again, pending signatures, the necessary, is it working compliance? You said it was inspected?
I'm going to say this, I was over at the location three months ago, I was called over for a meeting by the tenant, I said I've not seen the construction and what's going on, the walls are closed, I asked the tenant if they would open a section of the wall so I could see what was done, if the proper plate, pressure-treated plate was properly put at the bottom of the wall against the concrete floor, if it was fastened properly, if there was insulation in the walls, what type of boarding they used on the inside and outside, I was able to review all that, so I am, I am confident that the construction of that wall would pass my inspection once that the permit has been issued, but no permit has been issued at this point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I do have something I want to speak on this, but I'll wait until Mr. Soper is done.
Okay. Counselor Sani?
Mr. Soper, can the tenant take the wall down and solve the issue?
Not without a building permit for demolition.
So either way, okay.
We explored that.
All right, thank you.
Would you like to excuse Mr. Soper?
Excuse me, Counselor Ray, nine seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soper, Counselor Napolitano.
All right, we've got a couple of different situations here, first of all, we have a, we do have the construction that was done inside the building, but we also are now aware... but we also are now aware that as far as the best of anybody's knowledge, the work is in compliance. So we're not talking about a safety issue. This is an issue between the tenant and the landlord, which I believe has, may involve things outside of the licensing. Seeing as that's the case, this is no longer a license issue, at least as far as whether or not the city council should be getting involved in this. I mean, I'm not aware of any problems or complaints with the tenant. I'm not aware of any problems or complaints with the landlord. If this is strictly being held up because the landlord was refusing to sign a building permit, then that's between the landlord and the tenant. And I honestly don't believe that we are in a position to override or get involved in that. Courts will make the settlement. They'll decide what they need to be done. And if it involves revoking licenses at that point, if they shut the business down, then circumstances will take care of itself. But right now, especially what we're aware of, what some of the values are going on down in that area, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city council to get involved in it. Okay, we're aware that in a safety perspective, the issue is no longer, is not an issue. So I will be voting to serve, refer this back to sponsor.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
It's a legal issue, so I'm not really sure. I'm going to yield the floor.
So the motion on the table is to accept the report, place on file, and refer back to sponsor. Counselor Hanlon.
You know, my argument on this whole thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we're talking about two things. Everything that the building inspector said and so forth is not what I'm concerned with. I'm concerned with the licensing, license to operate a repair shop was issued to a tenant without the owner's authorization or the owner's signature.
A renewal.
We do it all the time. We do it on originals. We do it on renewals. We do it all the time. We've been doing it that way for 50 years. The papers that are used for, to find out whether we should do this belong to the city council. It doesn't belong to any other office in this building. It belongs to the city council. Those are our papers. The fact that if we, if we forget this and we allow this to continue on the way it is, which is, doesn't bother me. I mean, that's up to them whatever happens. But we don't know when this court case is going to become a court case. We have lawyers that are here that tell you that this thing can drag on for years. At the same time, there'll be something operating without, and when renewal comes, you know, it's going to just, you know, add on to it again, you know, so forth. And the other thing is that, let's say that this other issue goes to court and the tenant wins. What happens then? We still have an outstanding issue on whether the license is granted properly. And let's say that the tenant loses. What happens then? We still have the issue that there isn't a license that was issued wrong. It's not the right thing to do. And, well, sending it back to me, if you want to, go ahead. But I think that what we should really do is just to not allow the license to be passed, have them restart the process over. I don't, I know that won't do any good because I'm sure that the owner of the property still will not sign it unless they make some amends among themselves, but that's the way I feel about it. You know, this is our job. We have the authority to do this. No one else. It's our authority and I don't want to give it up. And I especially don't want to give it up for all the other people that are going to be coming in here saying, "Oh, we don't need the owner's signatures anymore." You know, that's all gone because this case proved it. So that's my point.
Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, only because this involves the livelihood of at least one, actually, both of these individuals. Both the landlord is collecting rent, both the tenant is having a viable business that is going to suffer based on what decision we make or not make this evening. Now, I greatly respect, you know, Counselor Hanlon's experience as a former city clerk. He definitely knows what the processes are. But I'm more concerned today what the process is in the clerk's office today. And if the assistant city clerk could give us an explanation. Is the, was a signature required for the renewal of this license?
There is a signature line for the business owner and the property owner.
Do we require it for a renewal?
It is not in our, there is nothing that specifically states that the property owner has to sign. There is something that states that the license application should be full and complete. But then that's open to your interpretation.
There's nothing that states that they have to sign it.
You don't have it in your rules that it says the property owner does. According to Clerk Maratato, he added this line when he was clerk at some point because there was an issue where two licensees came for the same license on the same property. And he, there was a dispute on who actually owned the license. So he added the property owner line so that way the property owner would sign so he could decipher who was who. According to, this is again from Clerk Maratato, who couldn't be here this evening. So I'm going off his word. He's the city clerk and been there for 10 years, so.
And that's for the issuance of the license initially?
Right. It's on the first page, so there's a bunch of things that you have to write. Property address, phone numbers, multiple times, phone numbers, email address. On the left side, there's what type of property, what type of business it is. First, second-class motor dealer, or what type of repair shop, in this case, mechanical or auto body. You know, if you're a trust, et cetera, et cetera. So there are all different things that have to be signed off or checked off. And my staff usually is very vigilant about that.
And the current business owner initially applied for his license for this business, when?
The current, a licensee?
The current licensee.
I believe it was 2014. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm almost positive it was 2014.
So they've been operating for three years?
Correct. They've been signed off in 2014 and 2015 and 2016 by the property owner. This would be the first time that the property owner did not sign.
And everything is in compliance?
According to us, we have no complaints.
And now with the exception of a signature from the landlord?
There's been no complaints at this property. I have not had to do any inspections. I have issues with some other properties. No one's called and complained about it. Except, you know, I had discussions in the past with the business owner when this first cease and desist order began. So I was aware of the issue and I had discussed it with Mr. Soper at the beginning. And that license was held for a little while because we didn't know, well, I did not know what was going on fully. I knew there was a cease and desist, so it was held until the cease and desist, we believed, was done or there was some type of other compliance. It was signed off sometime, I believe, a month ago, month and a half ago from the building department and it was issued.
And the landlord had no problem three years ago, obviously renting it?
I wasn't here.
No, I realize, but the license was issued in 2014.
Correct.
So they've been conducting business in that space?
And this was just a renewal, correct.
Since 2014.
Correct.
All right, so that's, so something obviously has changed in the last three years.
Right.
And now we're basically looking at a loophole where it requires signature.
And just so you know, as, starting Friday, as interim clerk, I'll be visiting the local municipalities and going over their license process. We are going to review and see if there's a better process than what we even do. I want to make sure that everything is what we're supposed to do. So I'm going to work with some other clerks. Though I believe it's, what we do is right, but there might be a better system, so just so you know.
Okay, then, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, again, I stand by my original statement. My main concern here is that there's something going on between the landlord and the tenant. Nothing that has anything to do with the city council. We've got a business owner who is conducting a livelihood. I don't see, it's our place. Unless they're in violation for some other issue, unless they're causing a problem down there, which they're not, unless they're, you know, they're out of control, which they're not, I'm very reluctant to punish a business. I've had a business myself. I went through all kinds of issues in the past on my own business and I don't think anything, unless there is good reason, and I don't consider a signature missing a good reason, to penalize or jeopardize or put a business out of business. Okay, so I, again, I will stand by my support for the motion to send this back to sponsor.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make it clear that the city clerk asked for a lease between the landlord and the tenant. There is a legal lease between the landlord and the tenant. So to me, that's enough of a signature.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we have our former city clerks that are next to us telling us one thing. And we have the chair, we have members of the council believing another factor. I just want to understand, if somebody can clarify, sending this back to sponsor means what? And taking the motion of Counselor Hanlon means what? I'm trying to clarify the two, the two items so that we understand the ramifications of both before we take this vote. If somebody?
I'm going to let our acting clerk fill in.
That'd be great.
Yes. So referring it back to sponsor obviously kills the motion at the moment. To revoke a license, according to your rules and ordinances, you cannot just revoke it this evening. You have to have a, you have to revoke a license in the same way it is originally presented. So you have to have a public hearing. It has to be posted. It has to be put in the newspaper. Has to touch all butters. I believe it's 150 feet in perimeter of the area. So it is another process. You have to send it to another meeting. You have to have me or the property owner post it in the newspaper again. Send the butters' letters and then host a public hearing here in front of, in the council chambers. Have the public be allowed to come up. Have the property owner, the business owner. That is the actual, only way you can revoke a license. We, as the city clerk, assistant city clerk, have the authority to issue a temporary cease and desist order through the building department, through our coalition we have there. So we have that authority only on licenses, licensees of the city council. So that is the actual process. You have to revoke it in the same way it is originally granted. That is in your, in the rules, in the ordinances. Is that, was that clarified? I'm sorry.
Chairman, just one comment. Assistant city clerk is absolutely correct. That is the proper way to do it. But I wanted to mention also that one of my learned colleagues had said that we're here to represent the taxpayer. In this case, I want you to remember that the owner of the property is the taxpayer. That's all I have to say.
Call for the question. Let's call for the question. All those in favor of accepting this report, placing on file, and referring back to sponsor? All those opposed to refer it back to sponsor?
Aye.
If the chair is in doubt, please call the roll.
A yes vote is to refer back to sponsor?
Correct.
No would be. Let's take another vote. Okay, Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Solar?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
No.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Aye.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
That would be 10 yeas, 1 nay. The order has passed to refer back to sponsor.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, take item 10.
Motion to suspend the rules and take item number 10.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take item number 10. All those in favor? Oppose the ayes have it.
Item number 10 is an order by Counselor DePiero as president to transfer $110,000 from the budgetary fund balance free cash into the DPW city buildings electricity and gas account due to increase in electricity rates.
Favorable action?
Suspend rule 13?
Oh, sorry.
Suspend rule 13.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded to suspend rule 13 for favorable action. Please call the roll.
One moment, please.
Take your time, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. And Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Solar?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano, uh, excuse me, McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin. Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli? And President DePiero?
Yes.
10 yeas, 0 nays. You have passed the order.
Please suspend the rules and take items 6, 7, and 8 collectively?
I still have one on the.
One more on the sign-in sheet, Counselor.
Yeah, I got like a couple more, actually. There's, uh.
Did we take 12 and 13?
We already did 12.
12 was already done.
Item number 22.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number 22. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ayes have it. Item number 22.
Item number 22, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Dela Solar and Counselor McGlaughlin to invite Facility Maintenance Director George Lane up to the next meeting to report on the renovations of the bathrooms at the Recreation Center on Elm Street.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. On the motion, can we ask that Ms. Delane up here before us, please?
Second. Motion made and seconded to invite Facilities Director Ms. Delane before us. All those in favor? Oppose the ayes have it. Ms. Delane, please come forward. Just turn the microphone on, please, and introduce yourself.
George Lane, Facility Maintenance Director. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Ms. Delane. Counselor McGlaughlin has the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Delane. Counselor Dela Solar and I happened to be at the Rec Center a month or so ago for a community event and we were pretty taken back by the conditions of the bathrooms. We know that we're going to spend a large portion of money on the new floor and kind of reamp the Recreation Center. But the bathrooms are in poor condition, to say it best. But we were pretty taken back by it. So we're trying to figure out, we thought there was money previously to do renovations to the restrooms. We're trying to get a history of what's going on there and how we rectify this situation so that the bathrooms can be upgraded at the same time that the new rubber floor is put in at the Rec Center and brings this building back to life for whatever extended period of time it's going to be utilized in the city. Do you have any information to share with, you had sent us a communication at the last meeting, which I don't have in front of me, but it sort of talked about a lot of other things other than what we were hoping to hear. Do you have any light to shine on this that you can share with us tonight? Fantastic. Could you start?
Okay, sure. Well, I spoke with Rich O'Donnell, who was the supervisor prior to me getting here only about four months ago. He actually came to me, I was a building inspector at the time. He had a set of plans for the bathroom. Actually, he had four different renditions of what could be done with the bathrooms. I believe the council proposed $50,000 to be put into those bathrooms. Money that was reallocated and used at the Wellness Center for those bathrooms. At the time, it was the belief that the Rec Center wouldn't be there very long. Now, we're at a point where obviously we're going to keep the Rec Center. We did get some insurance money from some damage that was put on, was done there and we're putting that into the flooring system. Mr. Dumas, Eric Dumas, our Budget Director, is now dissolving the fiscal year and he's hoping that he's going to come up with some funds that we can put back into those bathrooms. If not, we will be coming before you to see if we can supplement what he can get back for us and we can get money reallocated and, or put into what we need to get those bathrooms done. But as we, as we're talking now, he is dissolving the fiscal year. We all know that. There's money coming back in. Hopefully, he can find enough that we can get these done.
So at some point, there was $50,000 appropriated for the bathrooms to be done at the Rec Center and at some point, somebody decided to allocate that money somewhere else other than the intent of the council, which was to renovate the bathrooms at the Rec Center?
Yes, that was.
Did anybody come back to the council to notify us of that? Because we were under the impressions that the bathrooms were going to be done over with the $50,000 at the Rec Center and then we walked in there a month ago and the place is in deplorable condition.
Right.
Do you know if that was?
I don't know, I don't know the process that was taken, whether they came back before the council to get the money reallocated. I would hope that that would be the proper step they would have taken. But for some reason, it was pointed towards the Wellness Center and the bathrooms that you're looking at, at the Wellness Center is where the money went to.
Right, so we, somebody sort of made a decision for us to do the bathrooms over at the Wellness Center. I'm sure they needed to be done over. I'm sure that that was an okay item. But they were, took what we intended on doing and reallocated it on their own suggestion.
Unfortunately, I can't speak intelligently on it. I was a building inspector at the time.
I'll yield the floor to my colleague and maybe revisit. Thank you, Ms. Delane, for all you do.
Counselor Dela Solar.
Good evening, George. I know we met the other day and we did talk about this issue, about the bathrooms. Did you happen to come up with, I know that a lot of work has to be done there. I don't know if we go to an extreme and got the whole thing out or do we go halfway and make it presentable until we get other money? Did you happen to come up with some ideas on what it would cost if we did do this so we can get maybe some money for the bathrooms? Especially, we're doing the whole rec, the floor over. Looks beautiful.
Yep.
Yep.
And we did three quarters of the building. We have just that quarter building left, which the bathrooms and the lobbies you come in. So, it'd be a sin to have it three quarters done, and the other part was kind of neglected. So, did you have a number that you think, and what we would do for that number?
Yes. I actually got ahold of the plans that Rich O'Donnell had drawn up by an architect at the time. Like I said, there were four different renditions of the plans. The only, the unfortunate thing is, is it didn't address 521, so the handicap codes weren't addressed on it. And once you do that kind of work, you are gonna have to put a handicap stall in, in the bathrooms. You actually can do a unisex handicap stall, they do recognize that, then address the men and women's room, which I believe there is a handicap stall there now.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we're looking at redoing the bathrooms. The $50,000 price tag that was put on it before is definitely doable, you know, today once again.
Yep.
We would do it in-house.
Correct.
We'd take it apart, and we'd, you know, do the bathrooms fully compliant with handicap access codes. The toilets and the urinals are all outdated, they're not allowed anymore, so those ground type toilet, urinals have to be removed. Boston Garden urinals, we call them.
Exactly. Now, another piece on there, I hope not going, getting out of line here, but did the floors all done, the money that was done for the floor? Did we do something for the drainage?
We're still looking at that. We have talked with the engineers. Basically, that drainage from that area is all flowing downhill into that, and by the time it gets alleviated down through Chelsea, we, that's where our backups come from. So, we have been talking with the Engineering Department, we'd like to see if we can elevate the sewer cover in that area. That's where the water is percolating backup through. So, if we can raise that and possibly put in two dry wells that work independently of the drainage system, the city's drainage system, then we can alleviate a few thousand gallons of water that accrues in that area on its own. But as far as being tied into those drain pipes, it's not working. There's too many hills in the area, the pipes aren't big enough, and they're backing up long before it ever gets to Chelsea.
I just don't want to do the bathroom over, and then, God forbid, we have a flood there again.
Well, the good thing about a bathroom is it's waterproof.
It's all tile.
Yeah.
You said we could do it in-house and save a lot of money?
Yes, sir.
Like we did with the court.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Council McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To Ms. Delane. Ms. Delane, I know you just came on recently, and you've been doing a lot of work throughout the city. I just want to applaud you on that. But with this down here on the bathrooms, there's a price tag, you say maybe $60,000 on it?
Fifty, $50,000.
Fifty? Okay, $50,000. And have we already put in for any allocation type to actually look at the funding source or what we're gonna do with it?
Have we looked at it yet? It was just proposed to me that the $50,000 from 2014 was used at the Wellness Center. How it got there, I have no idea. I spoke with Eric as recently as today, and he is seeking to find the funds. You know, there's a lot of money that gets returned in a budget at the end, and he's trying to get the money put together in that man afar us. He said if he does fall short, he will go before the council and try and supplement what he has and fulfill the needs to get the bathrooms done.
Okay. So, and then we could do a majority of the work in-house?
Absolutely. That would be all the plumbing, all the electrical work, all the tile work, the rebuilding the walls, plastering, everything, in-house.
Great. Thank you very much.
Council McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we lay this over until...
Excuse me, customary thanks.
Excuse me, customary thanks. Thank you for appearing tonight, Ms. Delane.
All set.
All set.
Thank you, Ms. Delane.
Make a motion that we lay this over to the second meeting in September with the report back from Mr. Dumas on funding and a schedule of work to be completed at the Rec Center.
Motion was made and seconded that this item be laid over, was it the second meeting in September?
Second meeting in September.
Layover to the second meeting in September, Mr. Clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Make a motion to take item number 14 from the calendar.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item 14. All those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number 14, and just give our clerk a second to get situated.
Item number 14 is petition to amend the City of Evertoning ordinance to allow electric generating plants, substation uses by special permit in the Lower Broadway Waterflood mixed-use sub-district by revising Appendix A table of use.
This, this...
Refer to the zoning board?
The, refer to the planning board.
Planning board, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just on that motion, if I could, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor.
I have a question I'd like to ask.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Just so I know who I'm dealing with, could they introduce themselves?
Yeah, please introduce yourself for the record.
For the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm an attorney with Bodich and Dewey, and I am here representing the petitioner.
And I know Mr. Cameron, thank you, Mr. President. Your name, Mr.?
Joshua Lee Smith.
Smith, Mr. Smith. I just want to be clear where this property is. I did get the information pamphlet in my mailbox. This is behind the Charleston True Building and that general area?
It's off of Charlton Street. Technically, according to the Cessar's records, it's 3 Charlton Street.
3 Charlton Street, okay. Where does the name, you know, I don't wanna, where does the name Hendersonville? I've never heard, I've been in office a few years. It sounds like something out of, it was dreamed up somewhere. Where did that name come from?
Mr. Chairman, point of information?
I can, yeah.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Counselor Henderson came from the person that built the village area. His name was Henderson. He was a developer, lived up on, right near George McCarthy's old house, but that's what it was named Hendersonville after him, a long, long time ago. That's Hendersonville.
All right. Well, it's a little confusing because I know we're, what's the street again? Charlton Street. I know where that is, but nobody's ever, to my knowledge, ever brought this name up. But anyway, is this gonna affect the condominium people that live in that area in any way? No. It's... I mean, there's some new development there, there's apartment buildings. Yeah. I mean, when you say effect, we... I mean, with trucks, how long is this project gonna go on for? This is a power plant? No, it's not a power plant. A substation? Correct. Okay. How long will this construction go on? I mean, to take to build a substation? Just a rough estimate. Probably... A year and a half.
About two years, yeah.
Okay. My, the reason why I ask you that, one of the residents that live in the development there that owns a condominium was curious as to what the inconvenience to not only her building, but the new apartments that were just created. Is that gonna affect that neighborhood at all? With trucks and, you know, the whole, we've got the casino being built, we understand that. But this is like an added feature, and the electricity generated from the substation, what is that actually gonna, who's getting that electricity?
Well, Counselor, there's no, there's no electricity that's actually generated from the station. The way to look at it is similar to, you know, circuit breaker box in your house, where you have, the power comes into your main breaker box, and then it branches out into various circuits. That's what a substation is. So, the power comes in from the high voltage lines...
Okay.
And then gets transformed down to what we call street voltage, and then from there it can get distributed out to the various neighborhoods and...
Okay. And where does it get distributed to? Where is this gonna go?
It'll, it'll all, it'll be all in Everett.
Oh, all in Everett, okay.
Yeah. And, you know, a portion of it will stay in that area, and it's really to address significant increase in power that we're gonna see.
We're gonna need that for the, for the future development of that area. Because we had a company here that just did some work on Main Street that inconvenienced drivers and so forth, EverSource, and that, to my knowledge, they don't supply electricity to the city, do they?
That's what they call a transmission line.
Right.
So, that runs right through the city.
Okay. I just want to get this clear. This is gonna benefit the City of Everett.
Absolutely.
Okay. And it's a year and a half project, and how big is the property? I didn't read, is it a half an acre or something like that?
It's a little over half an acre.
Little over half an acre. But you'll have police details and the whole nine yards? I mean, you're gonna have police there for trucks?
During, during construction.
Is it a big operation, a year and a half?
It's, it's, it's really, as substation sites go, it's a smaller lot.
Oh, it's a smaller lot?
Right. It's adjacent, to pinpoint it, it's adjacent to the parking lot that wind, with the new wind building.
Okay.
We're all there.
So, there's activity happening already?
Exactly.
Okay, good. Well, you've cleared up some questions that I had, and I was asked to ask that question. So, the least amount of impact to that neighborhood would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for being here this evening.
Absolutely.
Motion was made and seconded to refer to the planning board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any sign-in sheet concluded, Counselor?
Sign-in sheet's done.
Okay. So, suspend the rules, take items 6, 7, and 8 collectively? Motion made and seconded to take items 6, 7, and 8 collectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number 6 is a donation of 80 bicycle helmets to the Community Safety Program of the Everett Police Department from Breakstone, White, and Glock. Number 7 is donations totaling $6,300 to the City of Everett Celebration Account, $500 from Unibank, $300 from Rockland Trust, $500 from Casala Way Systems, and $5,000 from Malden Transportation. Number 8 is donations totaling $750 to the Everett Celebration Account, $250 from Aggrega, $400 from the Brewster Company, and $100 from Oliviers.
Accepted donation for letter of thanks to the donors?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donations, a letter of thanks be sent. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council Delasola?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Matuski?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Council Sonny?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Aye.
Council DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. I believe we are now at 15.
15?
Yes.
Item number 15 is order sponsored by Council Anthony DePiero as president to grant the petition for renewal of a mechanical license from Giddiel Auto Repair at 35 Garden Street.
It's all the paperwork and all that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, it's a reappoint, renewal.
Favorable action?
Yeah. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council Delasola?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Matuski?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Council Napolitano?
Yes.
Council Sonny?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Aye.
Council DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item 16 is now preferred to be read.
Item number 16 is an order sponsored by Council Anthony DePiero as president to petition to alter canopy from Captain's Market at 136 Ferry.
Counselor Capone? Mr. President, thank you. Through you to our clerk, could he explain what the alteration is?
Yeah, they're recovering an existing, an existing one. The one exists now, and they're just recovering it.
Same color, same everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Same as exists now. I guess it got worn.
And I believe it's at the intersection of Nichols and Ferry in that vicinity, just to clarify for everybody. Thank you very much. I have no other questions. Counsel Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few months ago, I brought up the fact that the old Nazzo electrical, mechanical, whatever it was now, next to Oliviers, gentleman was up here, said he was gonna redo the whole thing. He only painted it. It looks terrible. You know, in good faith, I vote for these things, okay? And you trust the people that come up here, and it looks worse than it did before. So, who's checking these awnings out after this, we grant them? The building department? Now, if somebody, like a recover, even if they recover it, they're supposed to come up for a grant, like this person. They're just recovering. Right. Well, that looks, that looks like a product that's gonna look good, but this guy painted it. That's the second time I've seen one painted. There was one painted on the corner of Chestnut and Broadway, looked awful, too. Yeah. I mean, can we have somebody go down and look at that? After the building? I know your office is busy and... But once you see someone, call. No, I've driven by it.
That went to, um, uh, Legislative. Item number eleven is an order sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero's present that seventeen hundred, one, one million, seven hundred, thousand, eight hundred dollars for general stabilization funding to the School Department Medicaid reimbursement account per the request of the School Department.
The Chairman, we need to correct the amount. The amount requested was one million, seven hundred, one million, seven, eight, to one...
See, it's not that easy, is it?
Oh, my God, yeah.
One point four million.
To one point four million dollars.
Oh.
So, favorable recommendation as amended.
Second.
So, first, we have to vote on the amendment, I believe, and then we'll vote on the...
Motion made and seconded to amend...
One point four million. The school changed it.
If I can clarify, Counselor Hanlon, there was, the number dropped that we received back from the state.
Suspend Rule thirteen as well. Mr. Clerk, can you read this letter from the superintendent?
Oh, you meant that loud?
Yeah.
It's addressed to his honor, the Mayor, D. Mayor Di Maria. This letter is to revise my original request due dated May 2nd, 2017. Regarding Medicaid reimbursement, as a result of the latest confirmation for Medicaid in terms of our total reimbursement, I would like to change our total requested from one million, seven hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars to one million, four hundred thousand dollars.
So, the motion was seconded...
Stanley Frederick F. Austin, Superintendent.
Motion was seconded to amend the piece to one point four million dollars. All in favor of doing such? Oppose, the ayes have it.
Suspend Rule thirteen.
Counselor Simonelli was a no on that motion. And the next motion was suspend Rule thirteen in favorable action on the order as amended.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Politano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli? Item number ten, yeah, item number eleven. No. Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Order has passed. I believe we are now at fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero's present to grant the petition for renewal of a mechanical license from Good Deal Auto Repair at thirty-five Garden Street.
Is all the paperwork in order, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, it's a reappoint, uh, renew.
Favorable action. Yeah. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Politano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item sixteen is now for, to be read.
Item number sixteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero's present, petition to alter canopy from Captain's Market at one thirty-six Ferry.
Counselor Capone?
Mr. President, thank you. Through you to our clerk, could he explain what the alteration is?
Yeah, they're recovering an existing, um, an existing one. The one exists now, and they're just recovering it.
Same color, same everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Same as exists now. I guess it got worn.
And I believe it's at the intersection of Nichols and Ferry in that vicinity, just to clarify for everybody.
Thank you very much. I have no other questions.
Counselor Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few months ago, I brought up the fact that the old Nuzzo Electrical, Mechanical, whatever it was now, next to Oliviers, gentleman was up here, said he was going to redo the whole thing. He only painted it. It looks terrible. You know, in good faith, I vote for these things, okay? And you trust the people that come up here, and it looks worse than it did before. So, who's checking these awnings out after this, we grant them? Building Department?
Now, if somebody, like a recover, even if they recover it, they're supposed to come up for a grant, like this person.
Right.
They're just recovering.
That looks like a product that's going to look good, but this guy painted it.
That's the second time I've seen one painted. There was one painted on the corner of Chestnut and Broadway, looked awful, too.
Yeah. I mean, can we have somebody go down and look at that?
Anytime you see it, yeah.
I know your office is busy and...
But once you see someone, call.
No, I've driven by it. I'm waiting for the guy that said he was going to resurface it. Had a business down Lower Broadway. I mean, it looks worse now than when we, you know, said to...
There should be no alterations. No alterations without a permit.
Just covering it is a...
Even just covering it, replacing it, yeah.
And what about just painting it like this guy?
No alterations at all.
Okay. So, somebody has to look at that. I don't want to jeopardize this party, because you have the paperwork, but the other guy had the paperwork, too.
Yeah.
He just never did the right thing there. So, you know, I don't know if the guy paid the bill or what, but it's not, it doesn't look good.
It's a shame.
I mean, Oliviers is a nice-looking place. Then you get that awning there, it looks terrible. But have, can we have somebody go down and look at that?
Sure. Favorable action on this piece?
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Politano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item seventeen.
Item number seventeen is a communication from Fort Point Associates regarding Chapter Nine Waterway License Application and Water Certification Transmitter on Wind, Boston Harbor Remediation Project Off Horizon Way. Flow Tide Lands of Mystic River in Boston Suffolk County, Everett Middlesex, copy and mail boxes. Date and time comments differ. Whatever that...
Except communicated, place on file?
Motion was made and seconded to accept the communication and place on file. All those in favor? Oppose, the ayes have it. Twenty? Yes, item number twenty.
Item number twenty, resolution regarding Counsel, resolution sponsored by Counsel Wayne Matuski regarding a resolution regarding the fence along the railroad tracks of Butting Power Street.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several discussions with our Building Commissioner, Mr. Sopa, and I'm happy to report that the fence has been repaired and made safe. Since we initially put this, I put this on the calendar, there was a young boy, you know, thirteen, fourteen, that was killed in a city not too far from here. Same situation, he got access to a fence and was killed by a train. Needless to say, I've been informed by a building inspector who's been quite busy, and he's doing a great job, as far as I know. He has told me that they're working with DCR and the railroad people to completely analyze the work that needs to be done. The vegetation is high there, and Inspector Nuzzo and Inspector Damato are in charge of this operation, so the residents of that area will hopefully see a big difference in the coming weeks. So, with that, I want to just thank the Building Department and Refurtherers back to sponsor, and I appreciate the work that the Code Enforcement Agency has done. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to refer the item back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is an order sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero's present, in order in amending Section one dash eight general penalty.
This is already being rolled. This is for...
It has been enrolled.
... ordainment tonight. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Politano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ordinance has been ordained.
Item number twenty-two is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Wayne Matuski and others, Massport Representative Community Advisory Board, huh?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-two is done.
He's reading twenty-three.
Oh, I said the wrong number, but read the right thing.
Right, he read the right thing.
Twenty-three, a resolution sponsored by Counsel Wayne Matuski and others, Massport Representative Community Advisory Board Member, Miss Souza appear next meeting to explain constant law law enforcement laws.
Counselor Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, since I've added the entire city council, it's made a real big difference in the message that we're sending to Massport, and I appreciate the membership helping me in this matter. The mayor's office and his chief of staff, Mr. O'Donnell, have been in contact with me. We are meeting with Massport at the end of the month, the three of us, and we are going to get to the bottom. We want our questions answered, when, if, and why the noise levels have been so unreasonable and unhealthy for our community. It appears that they may have shifted their flight patterns to other parts of the city. I'm getting reports that I got tonight that it's affecting another part of the city that I hadn't heard from. But I can tell you, I've got hundreds of phone calls from people affected by this nuisance. You know, certain things are grandfathered in in life. If you live near a railroad track, you expect to have trains come by your house, okay? You live on a parkway, well, you're going to get some trucks. You live in an industrial area, you're going to get that. But the sky is off limits, you know? Now, I had some councilmen at a recent reception this weekend at my house, and I was just going to say it was the quietest day in forty-six days. And soon as I was saying that, I...
Ten planes flew over.
Counselor McKinnon counted them, ten minutes and, ten planes in ten minutes. And I was just saying, wow, maybe they're getting the message at Massport, you know? And I want to try to be polite here, but they have the biggest con job going. They're a state agency, and they're con artists, let me tell you. They'll take advantage of any community that they can. They're just shifting the burden from one place to another. And I've heard all the wind conditions, and you heard about the new runway, right? Okay, fine, let us know what's happening, when it's going to stop, and let's get back to a nice, quiet community. There's a lot happening in our city, and I want to protect the ear rights of our community, and I will do that. But with the mayor's support, we're moving forward. We're going to get answers. We're going to find out why this noise level has increased tenfold over certain sections of this community that have been affected. And the people that call me and that call Massport, I say to them, "Thank you." Every call helps. And I want to thank this membership, once again, for standing behind me and really, you know, I hope that you understand that I would never put anything on the calendar that is frivolous. I've meant what I said all these years on this matter, and I appreciate the membership supporting me in this matter, this important matter. So, I will update the council after the meeting with Massport. I'll, so, maybe we should lay this over to the last meeting in August, I think that is yet. The meeting, August twenty-eighth meeting, Mr. President, and I will update the council on what chance buyers at Massport with the mayor and his offices.
I'll second it.
Motion was made and seconded, Counselor Politano?
Thank you. You know, there's, there's a few things that are true about this situation, okay? Logan Airport has actually been there fifty-plus years, planes flying over Everett is nothing new. But having said that, the other truth of this is, is that it is becoming an oppressive situation. I've been talking to a lot of residents in the city the last couple of weeks, and the thing is that this city council, as collectively, had sent this to the State Senator Di Domenico and Representative McGonigal two years ago. Again, so this is, this is an issue that we continue, continue, and continue to address. You know, for a lot of people, the airplanes become white noise. You just don't hear it anymore. Became very apparent during nine eleven when the planes weren't flying over, and you could hear the silence. But there are a lot of people that are actually legitimately disturbed by these noises. Now, past couple of weekends, not because I have nothing better to do, but, you know, I was down Market Basket, waiting for my wife, I was outside doing some work on my car, and I decided to start timing the planes. They were landing, they were landing at Logan about a minute, a minute and a half to a minute, three quarters. So, every, every minute, thirty seconds, minute and forty-five seconds, there was a plane coming in. Planes landing do not make as much noise as planes taking off. And at that time, after watching that and taking some notes, I'm thinking to myself, well, you know, this, really, this situation is as bad as it is. On the other hand, the following weekend, right in my living room, because we're also right directly under the glide path, we experienced the planes taking off from Logan. Whole different kind of noise. Jet engines need a certain amount of thrust, and that's creating excessive amount of noise, especially directly over our city. So, the fact that this issue has not gone away, and the fact that the city council is collectively in agreement that this issue needs to be addressed, you know, we definitely need to take stronger action. You know, the only way we're going to do this is to continue to keep this issue live and continue to push. I was really hoping that Mr. Souza would be here tonight, because I did have a few questions for him. I want to know exactly what's been going on, because, again, this is nothing new. This, you know, but again, we need to make sure that Massport, we can't hold Massport accountable except through our representation. And if he's our representative there, we need to know what action, if any, what discussions, if any, are coming back to the city, you know?
I think the only reason Mr. Souza wasn't here tonight, because there's a meeting taking place later on this week, I believe.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I don't, I understand that, and that's, and that's completely understandable. You can't be in two places. But at the same time, we do definitely need to get this addressed. So, again, for the public that is out there that think that this is just a political noise from one of our colleagues, I can assure you, as fellow colleague, this is not the case. This issue does legitimately get to some people, on people's nerves. Not everybody. But those of us that don't not, that are able to tune this thing out, we need to understand and have accepted that there are people that can't. And it does create all kinds of problems. So, probably for me, I do applaud Counselor Matuski. You know, we've got, he and I have been on different ends of the fence many times, but I fully, I fully support these efforts here. But we need to make sure these efforts get us some type of results. Otherwise, it's the same rhetoric that we throw out every year, and for the, for the residents that don't believe this is a problem, they're looking at us as political. For the residents that are having a problem with this, they're not looking at us doing enough, and we need to do more. So, I applaud the fact that we're keeping this issue alive, and honestly, I hate to think that we have to wait till the last week of August for an update, but if that's the case, then let's get an update. But let's find out what's going on. This needs to change. Cannot stay the way it is. Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the sponsors, well, when they have the, the meeting, if they could please, if it's going to be determined that this is going to be an ongoing thing, clearly, we're an impacted community, and I think one of the items on the table for discussion with Massport should be the remediation, soundproof windows, anything like that that they're going to offer to the community. So, I would just ask that that be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Matuski, please be brief.
I will. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, I ask, knowing that I have a meeting at the end of the month, the appointment's been made through the mayor's office. The mayor takes this issue very seriously, and as a matter of fact, he told me that his office is receiving a lot of phone calls through Mr. O'Donnell, his chief of staff. And I also want to mention that I spoke with Representative McGonigal and Senator Di Domenico just three or four days ago. They're very concerned, and they want to, they're actively helping out. The increase that we've got since May fourteenth is unprecedented. We've always had some plane noise, Mr. President, but nothing to the degree, and we can live with that. I'm reasonable after what we got. I mean, I'm a reasonable person, but I'm not giving up my, my backyard or my deck for no good rea, there's no good reason for it. It's an unhealthy thing. But on defense of Mr. Souza, who is the mayor's appointee, is the Massport Community Advisory Representative for Everett. I asked him not to come. Whether he has a meeting tonight, I don't know, but he has been active. But I want to get some answers. Believe me, I'm not going there not to get answers. I want to know when this is going to stop, what the future's going to be, and I want to give you some good news when I come back here. I'm not going there with, I'm not going there with my hat in my hand. I've been tortured here. I've reached, my phone has not stopped ringing in the last month. And as you gentlemen were at my home the other day, you saw, that was actually not bad. Wasn't too bad that day. And I was just ready to say, geez, we had some peace and quiet for three days. But then again, today was a bad day, too. So, we've got to get this under control. You know, and Counselor Politano, I want to thank him. It was the nicest things he said about me in many years. I appreciate it.
Motion was made and seconded to refer this item to the August meeting. All those in favor? Oppose, the ayes have it. Item twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four is an order sponsored by Counsel Jonathan Hanlon, that in accordance with Division Chapter Three, Section one of City of Everett Charter, Chapter seven dash one sixty-three, devised ordinance of City of Everett, the South, good physician of mayor shall be one hundred and sixty thousand annually effective January first, 2018, and one hundred and eighty-five thousand annually effective January first, 2020. It has been enrolled, it is up for ordainment.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Capone?
No.
Counsel Del Sola?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli? Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli? Yes, okay. Nine yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
Counsel Del Sola?
I did change mine to yes, please. I was reading the other number.
Counsel Del Sola?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
It has been ordained. Is there a motion for reconsideration?
Make a motion for reconsideration. Hope it doesn't prevail.
Is there a second on the motion? Motion made and seconded for reconsideration on the item?
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Sola?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel Hanlon? Counsel Matuski? Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Polatano?
No.
Counsel Sani?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
Counsel DePiero?
No.
One yay, ten nays, Mr. President.
Reconsideration has failed. Item twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Counsel Richard Del Sola to invite DPW Director Jerry Navarro and spokesman for National Grid, Dan Cameron, to the next utility committee meeting relative to Ferry Street project and the condition of the street.
Counsel Del Sola?
This issue, we all know. I think this is real, Ferry Street, gas mains put in, services are done, National Grid's complete there. A while back, we were told, and I won't get into it too much because it's going to go to committee anyways, that once the gas line was done, the water's coming right after us. Right after the gas. It was going to be the water, the soil, electric, and everything. I made a few calls. The word is now, the water may now come into 2018. So I did speak to a few people, National Grid, and they're willing to come up next meeting. I do want to add Mac Comedy to this with Dan Cameron and Mr. Navarro also. Come and explain when they're going to, they did patch some trenches that sunk, but we want a full grind. We don't have to wait that long for the water to come in on Ferry. So I yield the floor to my colleagues, but this is a, it's a horrible issue out there in Ferry Street right now.
Can you read item number twenty-eight to Mr. Clerk?
Item number twenty-eight, resolution sponsored by Counsel John F. Hanlon, City Engineer appear to explain public condition of Ferry Street from beginning to end.
Yeah, Chairman, I just wanted this engineer to come here and for him to explain it to us, you know? You know, we were promised that this street was going to get fixed starting in the spring. And it's almost getting to the position now that you can't drive on it. And some of the side, I know some of the side streets have been heart dropped. And, you know, they've been fixed up and everything, as far as they go, a hundred feet up or whatever it is. But, you know, I don't ever remember people doing work on the street, leaving their equipment there, leaving piles of stones, leaving ditches with plates over them for such a long period of time. It's just not fair. So, you know, I'm going to ask that they repair the thing now and not wait until then. Let them tear it up when they want to put the water in. Then they can fix it again.
Correct.
That's what they should do anyway, so. But I just refer to whatever, if you want.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yeah, this item's been on for a while, actually, Ferry Street. I know it was over the winter, they were supposed to fix everything kind of completely.
Did it patchwork?
Patchwork, so that wasn't, you know, smashing our plows and stuff like that. I remember putting a piece on, I think it was with Councilman McGlaughlin. So this has been quite a while. We need to get some answers, and we need to get some results now. So I concur with both my colleagues, and I'd ask if I can be on the pieces with them, if they wouldn't mind.
Absolutely.
As well as Councilman McGlaughlin.
So is the motion to send both pieces to the Public Utilities Commission amend by adding Counsel McKinnon and McGlaughlin and invite Mr. Comedy to that meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six, an order sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero's present to cause an advertisement to be posted for not less than two weeks to solicit resumes of Everett residences interested in seeking the position of city clerk and that the Committee on Legislative Affairs and Election receive said resumes to interview each candidate and make recommendations to the full city council no later than August 14th, 2017.
Favorable action. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call and roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Sola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, an order sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero's present to regular meetings of the city council hereby suspended for the summer months of July and August 2017 except for Monday, August 28th, 2017 at 7:00 P.M.
Favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call and roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Sola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine, resolution sponsored by Counsel Stephen Simonelli for the moratorium on all storefront places of worship until the city can make sure that they're all in compliance with rules and laws of the city and if they qualify for nonprofit benefits. Need opinion solicitor, mayor's office, code enforcement on the legality doing this. Refer to the next Public Service Public Safety Committee meeting. Inviting the enlisted people.
Is that your motion, Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded to do such. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item thirty.
Item number thirty is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Stephen Simonelli that the chief of staff appear at our next meeting September to inform the public on how the new computerized parking machines are working out.
Make a motion.
Oh, with a rig report?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, it's all there. In September.
Motion made and seconded to do such. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And before, there was a motion to adjourn. We know this is our city clerk's last meeting, so I do have a citation from the group that I'm going to present to him.
I want to apologize for being late this evening. At eight minutes of eight, my brother called. Mom was having trouble breathing, but she's, she's fine. She decided to cut branches in her backyard and hurt her stomach, and she has breathing problems to begin with. So it just made it worse. But Ma, I know you said you'd be watching, so.
Exactly. You should be doing something for Ma. So it's a citation. It says, "Be it hereby known to all that the city council and as honor to the mayor hereby offer the sincerest congratulations to Mr. Michael G. Materazzo in recognition of your retirement, even though you could have taken a vacation anytime you wanted, after all you have accomplished in thirty-six years, but especially your expertise and dedication to the city of Everett as a city clerk and clerk of the Everett City Council from 2006 to 2007, serving with integrity and accountability. The very best wishes to you and all your future endeavors given this 26th day of June, 2017, by myself and the entire body."
Thank you. I just want to thank the city council for the opportunity to serve as assistant city clerk and then city clerk. It's something I'll never, I'll never forget. It's something I've cherished. So many people in City Hall were so great to me. Starting with our city solicitor, Colleen, who, you know, was there during some of the really tough days. And there's folks that I'll always remember, Colleen and Dave Rodriguez, and of course, all my, all my colleagues through the years in the city council and you ladies and gentlemen who serve now. And I just want to say thank you to you and to the mayors that I served under. Mayor Ragucci, Mayor Hanlon, Mayor DiMaria, all very good to me. And, you know, it's tough to move on, but you know when it's time. And everyone kept telling me, you'll know when. And boom, in one afternoon, I said, yeah, this is it. This is it. And I knew immediately. And so I'm not sure what I'll do now. I'll probably stay active in some way in the city, but we're not going anywhere. Having my roof fixed, in fact, so we're not going anywhere. But I just want to thank you. I really want to thank you on behalf of myself and my family. Real quick, I just want to say that when I got the job as assistant city clerk, you all know, I mean, I was out of work, the wolves were at the door. I think I said that in one of the papers. We were about to lose it all, and then I ended up assistant city clerk. And the greatest thing of all was then my dad got to see me become assistant city clerk before he passed. And he got to die knowing I'd be okay. And I love you guys for that. I love you all for that. That meant so much to me. And thank you. It's made a big difference for my family. And I hope my successor takes the job as seriously as I did, but learn to step away, learn to take a vacation, learn to get away. And that is so important. Maybe they'll last longer than I did. So thank you.
We might as well take one last group photo for Mike. Motion to adjourn. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.